All right, compliance with guidelines and regulations with transgender, nonconforming, and transitioning students' policy. Brendan, you are our policy chair or policy subcommittee representative. Could you please...
Sure. At the request of the larger committee, our subcommittee met last week to review Foster Gloucester Regional School District Policy Number 6275, policy affecting students who identify as transgender, nonconforming, or transitioning. That committee reviewed it, we discussed it with our legal counsel, and we found it to be in conformance with the state law and state guidelines as they stand now. So, we don't have any changes which we wish was added to this group. The other thing that we wanted to add is that the state Rhode Island Department of Education will be reviewing these policies for all school districts throughout the state. Our policy will be reviewed by RIDE to see whether it conforms with the expectations and laws as they stand now in the state. Our policy subcommittee felt that once that review came back from the state, if it was appropriate, we could go back, take a look, and see if any additional modifications needed to be made. That's all, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Brendan. So, there was, was this on our, was this posted, the policy? Was it on the agenda? It was up front. So, I don't know if everybody got the policy, but it was up front.
It was on our website.
And it was, it's on our website as well. So, I appreciate everyone for coming and the discussion on this, because it would be a lot of back and forth. I will limit it, I will limit it to two minutes, just to give everyone an opportunity to speak if they would like to. But please know, this is state guidelines, and we do not have wiggle room that we are aware of. However people may feel about this topic, if we do not, we do not follow the guidelines and the expectations that they have put forward by the state, they pull our funding. That they threaten us constantly with pulling our funding. And that's the sad reality here. And if there are people that don't agree with this, you have to go higher than us and go to the state. So, if anyone would like to act and speak on this, please feel free. Please raise your hand and come up. And you can sign in or come to the podium and sign in then. Would this committee like to say anything on this topic? Okay. Would anybody like to say anything? You can sign in, and then you can speak right at the podium, please.
Did you sign in?
Yeah. Thank you.
Please take your name and hometown.
Push the buttons.
Does it move? I don't know.
Hi, my name is Nicole Solis. I see on the agenda that you wrote compliance with guidelines and regulations. You're wrong. There is no binding law, no binding regulation, no binding guidance, no binding guideline requiring schools to let boys into the girls' bathroom or hide information from parents about their kids who think they're the opposite sex. You got bad, you got bad legal advice from your attorney. Rhode Island school committees have inherent power under Rhode Island law to set their own policies, and even the Rhode Island Department of Education, Anthony Cottone, is on record arguing that he can't force you to adopt policies. You're talking like, oh, you're gonna have all these consequences. No. Yes, I see the guidance. It's not binding, meaning you are not legally required to adopt it. You are not required, you don't have to have boys in the girls' bathroom, you don't have to open up students to sexual assault, you don't have to hide information from parents that their kids think they're the opposite sex. Demand that your attorney show you not only her sources of authority, but also arguments that may refute her position, because there are arguments that refute her position. She may have opened you up to the liability that's going on around the country such as this. Lattin County had a girl raped by a boy who put on a skirt to enter the girls' bathroom under the transgender policy. A 12-year-old girl was assaulted and violated in October by a boy claiming to be transgender in her school bathroom in New Mexico. Another boy in Oklahoma beat up his female peer in a women's bathroom. Virginia just made it a law that all schools must notify parents if their kids think they're the opposite sex, and the lieutenant governor is advocating publicly for parents to sue their schools if they don't notify parents about their transgender status. You are not legally required by any binding source of authority to risk the safety of girls in school bathrooms or keep secrets from parents. Your lawyer is wrong. She gave you bad legal advice, and you should fire her because her bad legal advice deprived you of your inherent power to set your own policies under Rhode Island law. You are allowed to debate this, you're allowed to talk about this, you're allowed to reject guidance. You're allowed to accept it if you want. But to be told that you have to do this and your hands are tied, absolutely incorrect legal advice. It is incorrect. And you should hold your attorney's speech to the fire for depriving you of your inherent power to set your own policies. Make her defend her position. Other attorneys don't agree with her. She should at least tell you that it's her interpretation, and she could be wrong. But no, I was at that policy subcommittee meeting. She told you you have to comply with the law. There's no law. There's no binding law to comply with. So, maybe you guys should meet again to talk about your attorney's legal advice. And you need to backpedal a little bit. Maybe consult a different attorney. You are not required to accept their guidance, and if there's funding that's being pulled, make your lawyer show you the funding. You're gonna be sued by somebody, okay? Because schools across the country are getting sued. Sparklet School District in California, they just paid out $100,000 to a mom who sued the school for hiding information about her daughter. They secretly transitioned her, and they gave her a breast binder and told her, the kid, not to tell the mom. Another mom I know in Maine, same thing happened. The school secretly transitioned the kid, gave her a breast binder, she's only 13 years old, told the kid not to tell the mom. Now, her school district's being sued. Do you guys wanna be sued by parents? And have kids be permanently psychologically damaged because you got bad legal advice? Because you didn't explore all your legal options? Someone's gonna sue you. It's either gonna be the ACLU, maybe it's gonna be RIDE that wants to like wag their finger at you, try to make an example out of you, but RIDE knows that they can't make you do this. That's why it's called guidance. That's why they ask you to pass it, and they bully you to make you think you have to pass these policies and adopt all of the requirements in their policies, which are written by activist organizations with a political agenda. So, I strongly suggest, you think about everything I said, you can look up everything I said, it's all in the news, Google it, school's getting sued. Because girls are getting sexually assaulted in the bathroom under their transgender policy. Do your own, do your own research. It's happening across the country. You guys don't wanna spend your money on lawsuits and have kids leave this district because they're getting sexually assaulted and because they're being told not to tell their parents about sexual things. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there someone else? Please sign in, and then you can speak at the podium. Did you sign in yesterday? Oh, I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you so much.
My name is Robert Carradillo for Westerly. Good evening. There are four key issues here, as I see them. One's interpretation of Title IX, per, for Rhode Island general law 11-24-1, which some would argue, I being one, that RIDE and this body here are misinterpreting. Do you purposefully, as your legal counsel, or not? Secondly, that one can be discriminated against, when the sex, one can only be discriminated against, I should say, when the sex with which he or she identifies differs from the one that they were born with. That gender identity outweighs gender reality. I don't believe that. The safety of our students, of course, I shouldn't mention that first. And finally, so-called protocol, which the superintendent shall establish according to the policy that I read. Discrimination goes both ways. The fact of which goes unmentioned in the guidance that RIDE gives you, the non-binding guidance that you get from RIDE and the U.S. Department of Education. Mandating that a male who identifies as a female use the boys' room is discriminatory. Allowing a male who identifies as a female to use the girls' room is likewise discriminatory. Both scenarios are wrong and potentially dangerous. I cite incidents at schools in Loudoun County, Virginia, and other districts where males supposedly identifying as females sexually assaulted females in the girls' room. Excuse me. I also cite incidents at YMCA's in Florida and California, as well as other states where the same thing occurred. We will get the YMCA policy changed, one way or the other, just like we will here, as we already know what is happening at Pontigan's High School. This policy also violates a boy's privacy to have a girl in the same bathroom while they use the facilities. It also sets boys up for complaints from girls for a variety of reasons. We don't talk about the boys. We talk about the girls, as we should, of course, but don't forget about our boys. This is a common sense issue. Regardless of sexual identification or identity, boys and girls don't belong in the same bathroom or locker room. It's not safe, it's discriminatory versus those who identify as the sex they were born as, and it is nor, it is morally wrong. Superintendent's protocol should include single-use lavatories on each floor for those students identifying as something other than their birth sex. Problem solved. No one feels unsafe. Everyone has the privacy they seek. If not, you'll be seeing a plethora, I promise you, of lawsuits from many of these people behind you right now. All of which you will lose. Stop keeping secrets from and lying to parents, some of you. These kids belong to these people and not to you. You would do well to remember that. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone that, anyone else like to speak? Yes. Please sign in first. If you do not, please sign in right here on the front.
Are you going by the sign-in sheet, or?
Nope. Whoever raised their hand, dear. I'm sorry, did you sign in?
Yeah.
Okay, so can you go after her if you don't mind, please?
Oh, alright.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
I wanna speak from the mom aspect. I don't have the legal bits about it, but whatever part you've taken this, I think this needs to be heard. I wanted to express my concerns regarding shared spaces between students of the opposite biological sex. I do not believe any spaces that involve intimate bodily functions or possible body exposure should be shared between students of differing biological sex. I do not believe you can validate a particular group's feelings while completely invalidating another's. Huge issue being no criteria for being allowed to enter a space of a different biological gender. How long have they identified as the opposite sex? Are they doing anything in the way of transition, et cetera? I know firsthand from my own kids, quite a few students who were always known to them as Jane suddenly declare they're Ben, only to resort to identifying as Jane. Again, and that is fine, they're kids, they're confused in figuring out who they are and what that means. They're allowed to search themselves, but they should not be allowed to be in Jane's bathroom, six months later Ben's, and then back to Jane's. I have empathy for all the students at Pontigan's High Schools, and I know this time in our society, depression and anxiety is rampant in our teenagers, regardless of their sexual identity and/or confusion. And we cannot compound that by saying they have to deal with uncomfortable situations where they would feel, they should feel, in safe spaces, when they are at their most vulnerable. I would also like to touch on the fear of people taking advantage of such policies and how that could be prevented. There are factual cases, and if I had time to cite them, I would. But we know that there are heinous people in this world that do awful things. And to think that it wouldn't happen here is delusional. I recognize that the percentage of chance would be very small, but as the mother of a daughter, I'm not willing to take it at 0.01%. There is one common sense solution here that is fair, and we consider it to all feelings, and that is boys, girls, and gender-neutral spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see that. I'm sorry, maybe I changed your mind. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Roman Besenzer, and I'm here to speak on the gender policy. So, I just want to say that there are a couple of things, and hopefully you can hear everything I'm saying. I do find it somewhat disgusting that parent concern over safety for their, for their children goes ignored and in fact advanced by attorneys like Marianne Carroll and her firm, okay? She has given you incorrect information. The guidelines that are provided by RIDE are simply that. They are guidelines. That is it. They don't have the right to mandate, you know, what individual schools do, and I, I would agree to challenge them on that. Be the first school, be brave, do not be afraid to back down, because right now, our entire state is being run by, you know, an authoritarian, tyrannical, you know, ruler at the Rhode Island Department of Education. I'm speaking specifically about the interpretation of RIDE's gender nonconforming statewide guidelines. You're currently being lied to by Marianne Carroll. She is doing the same in North Keystown, South Keystown, and of course, here in Foster Gloucester, okay? We don't need coed bathroom mandates. We can easily revert to, you know, boys' rooms, girls' rooms, and a gender-neutral space. That is currently what is happening in some districts in Rhode Island. That's perfectly, you know, respectful to all children. So, I just wanna reiterate also, as a mother and also as a teacher, that kids are very, very, what you might be understanding as fair and inclusive might very well be horribly, horribly embarrassing to young people, to young girls, young boys. And so, as a result, children are afraid to use the bathroom, okay? Now, that's probably not data that you're going to get from your school principal, but they're afraid. There's a lot of bathroom violence. There's a lot of socializing going on between both sexes in the bathroom. That's not acceptable. And it's not acceptable for the young ladies who would like some modesty and privacy to be confronted with young males and vice versa. It's not acceptable for young males to have to contend with girls in the bathroom. It's unfair to everyone. And I think that there is a way to resolve this issue fair and equitably, and also in a way that is compassionate and inclusive to all children, and that is to have a third space called a gender-neutral space. I know, you know, several other schools, that is the case. So, look into that, please, because this is going to result in harm coming to a child. And I don't think anybody here on this panel would feel particularly good about themselves if they cowered, cowered in the face of threats coming from RIDE to cut funding. Challenge RIDE on that. And challenge your attorney over there, because she's avenging and infuriating parents across Rhode Island with her interpretation of guidelines and laws, okay?
Thank you. Yes, please sign in. So, I just would like to read, so unfortunately...
Josh Joseph. Josh Joseph. I think I did, but I forgot.
Oh, excuse me. I would just like to read, so as a committee, unfortunately, we have responsibility to the taxpayers. I hear all of your concerns, believe me, I hear it loud and clear. But unfortunately, we have a responsibility to the taxpayers that if they withhold our funding, it's a huge financial burden to the taxpayers. And that, so I'll just read to you one tidbit of it. And yes, I can, I will personally make some phone calls about the interpretation of this, but it says, "As condition of receiving federal funds, a school agrees that it will not exclude, separate, deny benefits to, or otherwise treat differently on the basis of sex any person is educational programs or activities," Title IX or implementing regulations. "The department treats a student's gender identity as a student's sex for the purposes of Title IX and its regulations." This means that a school must not treat transgender students differently from the way it treats other students, and must be able to use the facilities that it identifies with. So unfortunately, yes, we can try to get other interpretations of this and get guidance, but at this time, I do not feel it is our responsibility to the taxpayers. It is our, to make sure that our kids get the funding. I do not wanna take the chance of eliminating any funding. So, yes, we can make phone calls, anyone, to see if this is flexible. But that's all I wanted to give my opinions on then. So, thank you. So, yes, I'm sorry, sir, you came up here, I did not mean to interrupt you or stop you. I just wanted to share our position at this time.
I appreciate your situation. My name's Larry Zomia. I live in town. I don't agree with your philosophy of losing funding. As a building official, and I know that...
Mike, speak in the mic. Mike, sorry.
Sorry, I thought I had a lot in my voice. Sorry. I recently, I'm a building code official. The current codes that were coming through that were supposed to be adopted on September 24th, on September 1st of this year, was considered as writ, an unfunded mandate where it came through, I'm sorry, not an unfunded, it came through with the funding already advanced to this state. They got the money over a year ago, contingent that the building codes were approved by September 1st. Myself, my committee of the building officials, and the organization of REBA, those many, many state officials, we got that squashed. So, now, they kept the funding, and we did not get the new codes in. So, I can challenge, I'll work with you to get that funding through no matter what. So, there's other ways around this. Don't, please don't dump it on funding, because it's about the kids. You keep saying that. Right, right. Has anyone asked the kids how they feel? Are they too scared to speak up? I have, they're scared to death to speak up. I'm not, I'm here, I'll speak up for anybody. My, my job is to speak up for people in the building code industry. I gotta protect the homeowner against the contractor and vice versa. We need to speak up. Now is the time to be heard. If somebody wanted to openly pray to Jesus in the classroom, would they be allowed? Or is that against our policies too, according to the state? There's not enough God in our people's hearts nowadays. We need God back in our schools and our hearts. Amen. You say the kids, the boys could have to use the girls' bathroom and vice versa if they say true, because they have the option to use the staff's facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. How you doing? Good, thanks.
Josh Joseph from Wood Sackett. So, you said that in the policy that gender is treated as sex, right? Is that, is that how that was worded?
It was worded that you must treat the, not as, as what they identify as.
Right.
That wasn't the policy. That is the, that was the guidelines or the Title IX, however you wanna word, whether it's law, guidelines, that's, that is what they expect us to follow.
So, so, you guys are in a really privileged position here to do something really good for everyone. You're in a culture war, whether you want it or not. I think all of you know that it's being thrust upon us. So, I'm more of a liberal, but I've been absolutely, it's been absolutely insane to watch this. Leah Thomas, everyone know Leah Thomas? Oh, yeah. What do you think's gonna happen to your girls? By the way, as a liberal that loved going to drag shows, that have gay friends, trans friends, it's gone into another dimension that's authoritarian now. That's what's happening. See, RIDE's going, and they're like, hey, we're gonna find out what you're doing, and you better do what we want, which is basically, because you gotta remember, a lot of people here don't believe trans women are women. As a liberal, the liberal values that we were taught were, I have my beliefs, you have yours. We don't push it on everybody so that we can get along, because we are all different. Even Christians can't get along with each other, there's different sects and everyone, and everything else. We're in a culture war. You're saying, hey, our hands are tied. Fight. Do the liberal thing. Remember classic liberalism? We don't allow people to take over on, oh, there's only one right way to do it. That's why that God comment, we need God in schools, I don't like that. No, we don't. No, we don't. Okay? And I love my Christians, brother, my Christian brothers and sisters, but keep God out of school, please. Like, just like, just, no, just like, don't bring the trans stuff in yet.
Let's not talk about it.
No, I, I love you, all of you, all my, and I fought with you with, and everyone knows this, with COVID, I was out there fighting the mandates. So, don't give me heck on this. It's, fight back. Say no, RIDE. Let them take their funding, and it'll go to national news. Then it'll put them in the position to show their authoritarianism. Draw their bullshit out. Thank you.
You signed in already, right?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Alex Haynes, class of 99, Pontigan's High School, Gloucester. Alex, can you speak up for my... Yes, can you hear me?
Oh, you're on the right end, Joseph.
Okay. So, I'm sorry I'm late. I'm not exactly sure of the tone of the room, but I would just like to say that we should support the trans community, that respect for people that are trans costs nothing. If there are issues and concerns that people have about trans people using bathrooms, there can be an accommodation made for them so that anybody that is trans or anybody that is not trans can use the bathroom that they feel comfortable in. School committee and the school and policy, it should be possible to make something so that everyone can coexist. So, trans people, students that are trans, children that are trans, need support. There are issues with mental health for trans people as well as cisgendered people in schools. Mental health is an important, important subject that everybody should be supported on. Keyword, everybody. So, if there's an issue about trans people, I think that it's something that we definitely need to pay attention to. The trans movement is upon us, and trans people have been a part of society since the beginning of time. The fact that people are now getting rights that cisgender people have always had, it should not be an issue for people to be concerned about trans people in our society. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Becky Pala Grino from Gloucester. So, I'm, I'm probably just gonna be the one that says that I really like this policy. I have spoken, I don't know what to worry about, but I have spoken with kids, mine specifically, who really likes this policy and thinks it's great, and is too afraid to speak, because last year she got a death threat. So, there are kids who are for this policy but are too afraid to speak, because sometimes Foster Gloucester can be very redneeding, and, and it's scary to speak your mind if you're a liberal. So, just wanted to speak on behalf of the transgender LB, LGBTQ community who thinks that this is a very good policy. That's all. Glory, glory, next one, ma'am. Yep. Yeah, that's you, you're up.
Thank you all for listening so patiently to everyone that came to speak tonight. You know that we have a lot of different viewpoints, and everybody has a position on us, and you might not always agree with it. Can I speak louder? I will, okay. Alright, so, I know that the policy came to you from a different member of the community at lunch, last meeting, and the issue was the bathrooms, and I know that we're talking a lot about that. And I think that you know that my position on that. But what we haven't talked enough today tonight about is parental notification. So, I went on into the community, I talked with some ex-employees, and I wanted to find out exactly what's going on. What's going on in high school, what's going on in middle school? And I found out a couple of things that are concerning, because the parents... And I found out a couple of things that are concerning because the parents, not all the parents know about it, right? We, we are actually allowing boys in the girls' room now in the high school. And it is causing a problem. Now, there's new documented incidents of fighting or other terrible things. But it is a cause of concern for a lot of the students and they're not being heard. There are some students that, you know, as Becky Pogliarino said, some of them like it, some of them are very supportive of it. So I dug down into the survey works for our district. And what I found was that in 2017, approximately 2% of the people that took the survey were actually identifying as something other than boy or girl. Every year it's gone up by more than the state average. In 2023, it's 9% more. What's happening at this school that we have so many more kids that are confused about their gender? And then I found out that in the seventh grade health class, they're talking about hormone replacement therapy. Now, I know the teacher. I trust the teacher. It very well could be that this was a student asking a question. I think we should take a look at the card to look. Just in case, just in case. So they raise a problem in this district. And you see the people here tonight, they're not here because you know they never come, right? So we have some solutions. I heard you talking earlier about doing a resolution about the world language. Well, when you make your phone calls to Rye, can you ask them, hey, what are you hearing from the other districts? Are they getting any pushback? Maybe we could do a resolution too on the transgender policy. Why don't we do that? Is that something we can do? We talked a lot about gender neutral bathrooms. I think that's a good idea if it's compliant with the law. And if it's not compliant with the law, I think we should do it anyway. We want everyone to feel safely supported. I don't want to see someone who's struggling with their gender forced to use a bathroom that they're not comfortable with. But a single stall at the nurse's office seems like that should be fine. And finally, when it comes to litigation, I would support litigation. I would support litigation as a plaintiff and I would support litigation as a defendant. And I think many in the room behind me would do that too. I would advocate for a national litigation fund for support. Thank you.
So we heard from everyone that was on the public comic signup sheet. Is there any one additional that would like to speak? Yes, sir. Hold on, I'm sorry, he was getting up first. If you don't mind, I apologize. Yep, come on up. Do you could please sign up first? Right there, right in front of Dr. Gloucester. Thank you.
First of all, I wanna make sure I can be heard back there because a lot of speakers are competing with the fans from the air conditioner.
Good job.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, I'll try to stay close to the mic. My name is Charles Correa, I'm a resident of Gloucester. And I wanna thank you for having this open forum on this issue. Whoever put it on the agenda, I wanna thank them for that because the trans I wanna talk about is transparency. And I think that's so important. We see how much, how some school districts get into problems because they willfully hid things from parents and they weren't transparent. Loudon was brought up before. It's a good case, it's a good case. And I'm sure that here, the school's mission of course is to involve parents in what's going on in the schools. I taught for 40 years. I know how important that is and I know that in our mission statements, that was paramount. And I think we gotta live that way. It works for the best for everyone. The other thing I wanna say is oftentimes somebody comes up and is opposed to the idea of having biological males in girls' bathrooms, sometimes gets labeled as inconsiderate. I don't think that anything further from the truth. I think what's going on is they're considering everyone in that case. I have nothing against students that are questioning what's going on. Personally, I think we should be more transparent with them. We're educators, we should be telling them what the risks are to chemical and surgical mutilation, which is what happens. And that's the road they're headed down and we turned a blind eye. We don't do our job as educators, for one thing. So I'm saying, I think in consideration of all students, we have to be aware of that. We have to be aware that girls have a right to privacy. And I would wager, I'd guess, that most of the cases where this is an issue is when it's biological males wanting to use girls' room. The other side, I don't know how often that happens, but I don't think it's anywhere near as often. Anyways, also as having been an educator for years and a biology teacher at that, I mean, I think we've got to enforce the idea that no matter what happens, a biological male will always have male chromosomes. A biological female will always have female chromosomes. A lot of them have had remorse from changes that have gone on. And I don't wanna dwell on that because I know we're talking about this specific issue. And let me get back to that. I think, and I read these guidelines, and, but that's what they are, they're guidelines. They're not, from what I could tell, they don't have the force of law. And I read it and I was thinking, like, in here might be the solution. It says, "This may include the addition of a privacy partition or curtain or permission to use a nearby private restroom or office or separate changing schedule." Okay? That made sense in here. And then they go with the caveat, and I don't know who wrote this, some humans wrote this, some people got together and came up with this, no smarter than any of us, and this is what they came up with. But this should not be done unless requested by the student and/or family. Well, where's the compromise? You know, there's no concessions, there's no compromise in this. And those students that feel uncomfortable, let's say it's my granddaughter, your daughter, the students that feel uncomfortable, we're gonna work with students to foster an understanding of gender identity and to create a school culture that respects. Who came up with that? You know, like, they're the problem because they want privacy? I don't like them. In closing, I think the solution is out there. I think if somebody brought up before, there should be a single-use bathroom throughout the school. I don't think you're gonna lose this case. I think that should be pushed, single-use for those that identify as a different sex. And, okay, let's say compromise, okay? They have to be compromised. But certainly, paramount to all that is that the girls have their privacy. You owe it to them. Kids come first. Thank you.
Thank you. Please sign in first and then speak. Thank you. Thank you. Please stick your hand. Yeah, right close, right in it.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jay Watts and I'm the director of the trans health program at Thundermist Health Center. I'm not a resident of Gloucester or Gloucester, but I'm here representing the 2,000 patients that Thundermist has served as part of our trans health program. And knowing that we have patients who are in every single town in the state, that includes patients who call Gloucester or Gloucester home.
Can you speak? Can you pull it closer? They're talking to you. Oh, not Dave.
Is it on? Is this better?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So I'm the director of the transgender health program at Thundermist Health Center, where we currently are serving over 2,000 patients who are members of the transgender nonconforming, non-binary community. Within, in Thundermist, for those of you who are not familiar, it's actually the largest federally qualified health center in the state with locations in Wunsakit, West Fork, and Lakefield. Our trans health program is statewide and of those 2,000 patients, we know that we have people who live in every single town and every single district in the state. And so I'm here today as, as a Rhode Islander, as someone who's transgender, as a leader in doing this, this work in the state. You know, I moved to Rhode Island 20 years ago because at the time, we were only one of two states in the country that had protections that allowed me to not get fired from my job. We were the second state in the country to do that. We've always been on the forefront of making sure that everyone is protected and people have rights in place. And with our trans community, over the last 15 years, so I'm also a licensed clinical social worker and that's my training and background. And through that work and through the, as a social worker, I have worked in other places before Thundermist, working with, with youth and their families and with trans adults and being able to access services and being able to advocate for their acceptance and inclusion in society. I was involved in helping to get these guidelines put in place. What I have not heard people recognize is that, or like mention, is that there's not just a guideline, there's a regulation. The guideline was passed in 2016, I believe is when it was first put out. The regulation was passed in 2018 that coincides with the guideline. So while, and it's put in place to be in accordance with both state and federal laws and privacy protections. And so I applaud the committee in taking a stance of looking at this as what you have in place now is in compliance and waiting to see what the, what the review comes back from, from Rye on ways that it could be made better or ways of offering training to be able to help improve the policy if needed and not taking a stand based on the wave of anti-trans and the way that there's been political focus on transness in the past six months. But as a trans person, I can tell you, that has never been like this. I've been out for 20 years. The vitriol and the fear that exists in the community and the way that the trans community is being demonized as in this other, that we don't exist, that we don't get to have these voices and that these kids aren't suffering and aren't really who they're saying that they are, it's all, it's new. We've been around forever. And with the heightened amount of emotional, like the tug of war that's happening, you know, I hope that there are no other trans kids or trans people in our hair list today because certainly, I'm hearing people saying things like, trans people don't exist and sitting here being like, I came alone tonight. My staff were all seeing patients and just feeling really alone in that space. And so I'm thankful for other people who've spoken up and support of the community and I support that you're gonna take a conservative look at waiting on this policy to make, be able to make improved changes and don't feed into the fear and vitriol that is creating trans people into a political issue when we're not a political issue. We've existed. The policy we've put in place, or like we've advocated for a policy and then a regulation we put in place back in, like 2016, 2016, 2018, was because I was working with these trans kids and families and seeing how they were being treated in school, how they were not able to learn in the same way that their classmates were. That they did not feel safe. They did not feel safe just navigating the school. They did not feel like the school was protecting them from bullying. And all of the policy did was to make sure that obligations of the school, making sure that it was, we're creating a safe learning environment for trans students as well as students who are not transgender, was being able to put in place and apply in a way that a family member, so when I have a parent, even now, right, a parent who says, I'm having a problem with my student in the school, one of the first things that I, me or my staff will say to them is, have you looked at your trans student policy? Have you been able to access that? And if families know what's trans student policy, that's a concern to us. Is it not available on that town's website? Can the district find it? Do the family know what they have rights to be able to go and ask the school for what may be needed? That's all of the policy, the intent of the policy was to make sure that families, it was a supportive family, since supportive families who are supportive of their trans kids and making sure that they're able to access the same rights of all other kids. And so I thank you for holding on this to see what comes through the state. And I'm hoping with what Rye is doing and reviewing these days, that we just make sure that every single district in the state will have access to that information so they have a tool to be able to advocate for the needs of their learner to make sure that their students are able to successfully participate in school. So thank you.
Can I ask the chair if I could ask a gentleman a question?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I can't remember your name.
Jay.
Jay, thank you. Thank you for coming. I just have two questions. One is, you said you worked in 2016 through 2018 on guidelines and then policy and you didn't use the word-
Regulation.
Regulation. You used that word, regulation. My concern is this, and I've, I've done a lot of research myself. I spoke to other attorneys other than just our solicitor as well. I've, and so I'm, I'm asking this question. Everybody's throwing around the word law. And my understanding so far is, I know there are guidelines and I know Rye is giving us guidelines. Those guidelines are not law. I know Title IX, which started way back when, it shifts with every administration. In the Obama administration, they included transgender and then when the Trump administration came in, it was put back to the school, not even just the states, but the school districts. So Title 19 is constantly shifting. And when, I guess something like that is not, it's not considered solid law because it's being challenged at all levels. The other law that keeps getting kind of pushed into these mandates and these guidelines is the Discrimination Act of 1964. Now, I'm old enough to know what 1964 Discrimination Act was about. I lived through the riots of 1967 in Detroit. My father's business was burned down. I know what that was all about. I actually was escorted by National Guard because I was out after curfew as well. But however, I digress. That law was, was written to protect race discrimination and then they, and then they threw in the other religions, sects, whatever. But it wasn't written in the spirit of transgender because that really hadn't bubbled up yet. And somebody earlier said, we've had transgender since the beginning of time. Of course we have. My question is this though. I think we have to be really careful to keep saying it's law. Somebody needs to quote me law other than Title IX and the Discrimination Act of 1964 because those don't hold water to this supposed law. All we have right now from Rye, from Rye, are guidelines and some mandates and some regulations. So, so before we-
Pat, I'm sorry, I thought you had a question.
Well, and so that was my question. What law are you, can you quote?
So I'm not aware, but what I can tell you is if you look at the guidelines that Rye put out, the first page lists laws and enunciates federal laws, but it also lists Rhode Island state laws that are applicable. And so I have-
I talked to- I don't wanna hurt your hands. I think we need to- I think it's not our place to bat your hands.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other question?
Nope, we're good. No. Thank you for talking.
So I'm Trish Saint Ange and I live in Gloucester. And I fully admit that I am very uneducated on this topic. And, but I guess my question is, some of the things I wrote down were like, what teenage kids' brains are involved in, you know, 18 years old and, you know, this is high school, but this is also elementary school. Like, are we talking about that a second grader could go into the girls' bathroom or the boys' bathroom?
So this is, we just-
Right, but what I'm saying is that this policy does say elementary-
According to their guidelines, according to their guidelines?
Right.
Yes.
So I guess what I'm wondering is, since we have these things in place, like at 16, you're responsible enough and your brain is developed enough to drive a car and at 18, your brain is developed- to drive a car, and at 18, your brain is developed enough that you can buy cigarettes or whatever it is, and 21. And I'm not saying that you have to be a certain age to be transgender, but I'm just saying, why are we worrying about this as much in school? When kids go to school until they're 18, I wouldn't think that someone, a child, would be making a major decision like that, you know, prior to 18. Or that, I don't know, I guess that's, to me, it's like a house thing? A home thing? Meaning to talk about with your family and stuff? I just don't understand, I guess, why it's as much in school. And I'm sure all the daggers thrown at me. Or from whatever all sides, like I said, I'm open to hearing anything and everything, and I actually find this very helpful to like, you know, hear things. So, but I guess that's just it. It's the thought of like, you know...
Why?
Why at such an age are things, you know, either? You know, I understand supporting things, but are we supporting or are we pushing? Or, so, that's all.
There's a big question.
Thank you.
Did you sign up yet? Or just sign off? Thank you.
I want to thank you. I was here last month, and I asked you to put on the agenda. And I want to thank you for saving the public.
Go into the microphone, they can't hear you.
Cheryl Grayhouse from Gloucester. I want to thank the committee for putting this on the agenda. I was here last month as a representative of the town council asking to have it placed on this agenda and giving the taxpayers and the residents of this town a chance to speak out. One issue that I wanted to address, and the last gentleman that spoke, you know, our concern is the safety of our trans community, our trans students. I am definitely in favor of the trans neutral bathrooms. I fear, yes, I fear for the safety of our girls, but I also fear for the safety, from what everyone says, that the trans are being bullied. And so it would be in the best interest of the trans community for them to have their own gender-neutral bathroom so that there wouldn't be any possibilities of them being bullied in the bathroom, whether it be the boys' room or the girls' room. So I think this is an issue that has not been addressed this evening. And I think that it should strongly be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone who spoke. Is there anything else that wants to be added? Make it quick, you already spoke, sorry.
Sorry, I'm just... Once again, Alex Haynes, I just wanted to kind of answer a couple of things that I've heard tonight. The reason why it's not out of the realm of reality to have people understand gender studies as young as four is when an individual can identify their gender, right? So that's elementary school. That's preschool. That's kindergarten. And that's a fact, that a kid, a kid can identify their own gender.
Alex, they need you to stop us, not the policy that we're speaking about this evening. So I'm sorry, that's all. Thank you. We're speaking about the policies. So do you want to talk about the policies?
About the policy is that there should be something that can make everybody comfortable. Trans people are people, they're students. They need to be supported just like anybody else. They're just trying to exist in the school system. They're trying to exist in their own skin in our communities. They're not trying to impress anything upon anybody else. They're just trying to live.
Thank you. All right, I don't want to go back and forth here. You did not speak yet, so please do not go. Yeah, thank you. Please sign up. Thank you. Please state your name.
My name is Matthew Berry. I live in Gloucester. We recently moved into town and fell in love with it. Fell in love with the school department. Our kids are actually celebrating. Oh, sorry. Didn't know that. I'll just crouch down a little bit. There we go. My name is Matthew Berry. We recently moved into town a year ago. We fell in love with the school, we fell in love with the town. We've had nothing but good luck with it. I'm a taxpayer. First and foremost, I'm a father. When I found out about this, I started discussing it with my 13-year-old son, my 12-year-old daughter. We left it out of my 8-year-old and 4-year-old conversations. I didn't think it was a place for them. I feel bad for the parents with transgender children. I understand what they're going through. They should understand what I'm going through. My daughter was appalled at the idea that she was going to be in a bathroom alone with a boy. And she didn't like it. If I walked into a bathroom and a public restroom in a park and there was a guy in there, it wouldn't be pretty. I think that's pretty safe to say. My son was actually more offended. When it came down to it, there's urinals. He couldn't imagine standing at a urinal and having somebody next to him who'll walk in. And they're kids, they're not hugging the thing because they're disgusted, they're dirty, nobody wants to do that. So what's going to happen when somebody walks in and sees his private parts? That's going to turn into, now he's at the office because he showed them his private parts. Those are the concerns we have. I don't have concerns so much for the transgender people. I do, I don't care what people identify as. It doesn't bother me. It doesn't bother my children. It bothers my children that they're going to be in a bathroom, and it's not even the transgender people. There are, it's predators. What's going to happen? Some kid decides, he's going to say, "I'll wear a skirt and I'll go in there and attack someone." Or some girl just wants to get mad because you broke up with them a week ago, and she suddenly says, "I'm a boy, I can use the boys' bathroom." My kids are fearful about it. So I guess my question is, is if the policy doesn't change, where's the adverse policy that's going to say that my daughter has someone to go to the bathroom and to make sure that she's safe?
So just so you know, there is, so if everyone's clear, that there is a separate bathroom that at any point, anyone can use a private bathroom, a single-stall bathroom. Anyone, transgender.
I told the girl, "Nurse." I said, "Go to the nurse's office." I don't think it's fair that my child should have to walk all the way to the nurse's office because she doesn't identify as something else if she's not comfortable with a boy in the bathroom. They shouldn't have to be the ones that are picked out. I'm not saying pick out somebody else. But a boy doesn't belong in the girl's bathroom, a girl doesn't belong in the boy's bathroom. I think there's a lot more to it than just the trans portion that everyone keeps jumping on. I don't want one of my kids to get in trouble. I don't want them uncomfortable. And if they're sitting there holding it on the bus because they don't want to use the bathroom, that's not fair either. So there has to be something that can be done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much for everyone who came tonight. Appreciate all the comments and the concerns. All right. So I think that was pretty much public comment because public comment's next on the agenda. But is there any in the public comment? We covered everything? Oh!
On June 6th, 2023, we passed a building use policy that would have allowed the school to generate some revenue for the use of our mental facilities. Again, muffled, sorry about that. We passed a building use policy, great, that allowed us to generate some revenue for renting out the facilities for different summer programs. And there was some talk about how many kids queue and how you can generate and everything squared away. So I had requested some building use forms. I did identify two programs that seemed to qualify for having to pay the school under the building use policy. And I know that the building use policy says that there are no exceptions without the approval of the school committee, and we haven't had any. So on August 17th, Dr. Palazzo, I wrote to you and I asked you, "How do I find out whether or not the payments were made?" And I continued to follow up. So while we're here in the room, do you think you can get that sorted?
Well, not right now.
No, not right now. But I want to know, how can I verify that the payments were made? Do you recall receiving my email, my phone?
We're responding to public comment. Yeah, that's not, so that's, we hear you. So thank you.
All right, so I should hopefully get an answer soon.
Well, there's a lot going on. This is the first of the school year, so I think we all need to be empathetic. There's a lot going on, and we have, we need to be patient. That is, and we're getting accurate requests. Where, accurate number what?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine. So everybody's been kind of busy.
That one is not good.
So I'm just saying, we have to be patient. There's a lot more going on than your emails or anyone else's. I appreciate your feedback and your concerns, but I think we need to be respectful. That there's other things going on and a lot of other employees in the building, so your information will come to you.
Right, is it easier for me to make an upper request?
Cheryl, we don't answer questions for public comment. So thank you.
We hear you.